The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you. We call this Berlin Town Council meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please.
On this side.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of righteousness, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get for looking down. That's what I get for looking down. You shouldn't mind me. Yeah. Let's start over again. Okay, welcome to -- no, it's all right. Cut the tape. Let's take that out.
Take two.
Yeah. Okay, roll call.
Councilor Campagnelli.
Here.
Councilor Evans.
Here.
Mayor Prusinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Pinessa.
Here.
Councilor Rocha.
Here.
There, you have a horn.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business is to recognize some of our town employees, which maybe we don't do enough of that, so I thought we'd do this today. We have four employees from our water department. We have some certificates for you gentlemen. Appreciate all your hard work and dedication to the town, keeping our waters safe, probably one of the most important things we can do as we watch other parts of the country with the disasters they're having. We are thankful for where we live, at least at the moment, till the other hurricane gets here, I guess, right? Let's hope it doesn't happen. So I have four certificates. I'll just -- I'll read one. This certificate is awarded to Wayne Bougaye, Bill Dornfried, Mike Perzinowski, and Charlie Sataowski. SKI at the end, your name is very important, as we know, to get an award. For achieving the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Connecticut Department of Public Health Office of Oral Health Water Fluoridation Award for the Town of Berlin for the last three consecutive years, 2013 through 2015. And we have a certificate of excellence for all of you gentlemen dated today's date. Berlin Town Council, Mark H. Kuzinski, Mayor. So if you guys want to come up here, I'll give you your certificates. Shake your hands, appreciate it. If you guys want to give a speech, you're welcome. Do you want to tell us about our water system? What happened here?
All I can say is it takes a team up.
There you go. There you go. For all of us. Let's see what we got here. There's yours. There we go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
What do we got? Yeah, Bill, how you doing? Always the last one. There you go, Bill. Congratulations. Thanks. Thanks for your hard work, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Nope. Thanks, Wayne. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Mike. Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
I know they're not going to say a few words. Trying to get them here is like herding cats a lot of times. You think you get them in the same room, but they seem to move around a lot. And all of these gentlemen are very fine gentlemen. When I left you last -- last in June, I had pictures for you for about the sewer pumping station, which these gentlemen worked on very hard at the time. Since then, we had a major main break, and I know Mr. Evans would appreciate this. I always like to give him a few pictures. This main break is one of the largest main breaks I've ever seen. Actually, we could have lost a truck or a car, and it was so large in Tollgate. These gentlemen spent most of the night working out there with our contractor, earth contractor, and basically did a wonderful job doing it. They had to notify the customers. They had to make sure that the lines are being identified when they came in, and you can see by the pictures that there are other utilities involved, gas lines, water lines, sewer lines. And I don't always get a chance to say something about these gentlemen, and I do want to take a few minutes to recognize them. As I said, they seem to shy away from achievements. Tonight's recognition is only a small portion of the work that they perform daily, albeit a small -- important function. Maintaining a proper chlorine residual and fluoride residual are very important, particularly nowadays because fluoridation through the Center of Disease Control indicates that there's some connection with oral health and heart health. So it's even doubly important. And they're trying to hit a moving target. Just recently, the CDC removed -- changed the optimum level from one to .7. So now they've got to make adjustments in their treatment and their systems, and so that's another function. Just to point out to gentlemen here, Bill Dornfried is our newest employee, just passed his Class One, is working on his Class Two. And Mike Perzinowski, before Mike -- before I came here, Mike Perzinowski took over, and when Charlie and Wayne were both ill for several months, all by himself, he worked the system on his own. I couldn't believe that he did it. It was amazing. And then, can't say enough about that. Charlie, Charlie is our crew chief, always steps up. Basically, when Wayne was out, medical leave, he stepped up and took responsibility for everything. All three of them were sick in February. Charlie would call me up when he was sick. I could not understand that he was sick, and he'd still call me and let me know what was going on. I couldn't believe it. And then Charlie, he's a free-giving. He also does work for the Lions Club and takes the people out, the blind out for fishing, whether it's on land and sea. I can't believe he has the energy to do it. Now Wayne Bougaye is our historian. He's the gentleman who basically is the longest-term. He knows every valve, every location, and a lot of the suggestions he makes for our consultants are very valuable in terms of saving time and saving money. Collectively, these gentlemen work hard, are loyal employees, and recognize the seriousness of their job function. Excellent to work with. I am professionally grateful and proud of their work. I am lucky to be associated with such a fine crew and all have a great work ethic. I hold them in high regard and hope you do as well. Thank you.
Thank you again, gentlemen. Appreciate all your hard work. Town wouldn't work without you and all the other town employees, so we appreciate it. Okay. Next, we have our audience of citizens. If anyone here wishes to speak in the audience of citizens, now would be your time. You can raise your hands. Don't all rush to the microphone at once. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close that portion of our meeting and move on to our meeting agenda, starting with our consent agenda. We have five items on our consent agenda. We've all reviewed them. I do have -- typically, we will just take these as a group, but I do have one question just on the bike repair station. That's just one question I have. Just you can enlighten us. Okay.
Do we need to remove it from consent?
We can remove number one, maybe just so you can explain it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to remove topic number one and put it into the regular agenda.
Second on that?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Go ahead, John.
No, we do consent first.
Yep.
All right, we'll do the consent. We put it on number one. Okay. Let me just see here. There was any other question? One more. Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to make a motion.
Motion. I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's all right.
Sorry.
So you'll move item number two.
I'm trying to go fast. You told me to go fast. I'm trying to run through this as best as I can.
You're doing -- you're hanging. I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to accept consent and agenda items two through five.
Second on that?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay. Item number, we'll call it 1A maybe.
1A.
1A. Just the bike repair station? Out of curiosity.
Okay. Yeah, we were offered a bike repair station at no cost to the town. We just have to pick it up and install it, and we -- so trying to make the town of Berlin more accessible through walking, biking, you know, better for people's health, connect the parts of town. We thought this was a -- for the price, it was a good acquisition for the town. We're going to find a spot located either near the school or somewhere near, you know, one of the parks or something like that. So it's a -- there's a picture of it there for you. It's a -- basically, there are going to be some equipment there to repair a bike. They are -- this is the challenge I think we're going to have, but it's all supposed to be fastened to the rack and not supposed to be to leave. And if someone's bicycling, they should be able to stop and tighten, you know, tighten any bolts and be able to repair their bike. We thought it was a good -- it was, you know, a good thing to do, so we thought we would accept it.
Great. Interesting. It's a nice donation. Okay. Can I make a motion on this?
Motion to accept the new business item 1A, the ultimate bike repair station.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Moving on to item one.
Agenda item number one is a donation of a round of golf for four and two carts at Timberland Golf to be used as a raffle prize in the initial Dread Coat Fund Run to be held at Sage Park. The proceeds from the event will purchase -- will go toward purchasing uniforms at Berlin High School. And John Zook is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Can I make a motion first?
Move to approve a donation of a round of golf for four and two carts to be used as a raffle prize during the Berlin High School Athletic Department's inaugural Dread Coat Fund Run and Glow Run. The event will be held at Sage Park on October 13th, 2017, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The value of the donation is $226.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Discussion? Yeah.
So I have to be consistent. When we talk about golf cart donations, we've talked over the last couple of years about kind of setting a limit or -- and I don't think Park and Rec has done that yet, but I will ask, since I ask every time, do we know how many were given last year so we can start to get a trend on what we're looking at? Only eight? Eight golf carts? Or eight donations?
Eight donations. Donation's total.
You know, I would just -- we've kind of been talking about it for a lot of years. If we can either Park and Rec or you or Mark or someone can really start to keep a tally of that, just so we can maybe put it into a budget for the finance committee next year so they can start to see.
We currently do -- I'm sorry. We currently do track those, and I can explain it along the way.
This is part of a schedule that I've passed out a number of times to you all, where we tracked it by year. We get -- we are making the donations. The donations are miniscule. We try to use them to supplement the marketing or advertising budget, which was reduced this -- in the current year from what John had originally requested. And we try to look at the organizations. One, we're staying primarily in-town with Berlin organizations. You have one on coming up right now, which was an out-of-town organization, but the commission, in discussing it, felt that it gets wide notoriety and would try to just bring more out-of-town or new golfers into the golf course.
And I'm not opposed to this at all.
No, no.
I just -- I think one of the things we talked about is if we can build it into your budget, then you don't need to come to us every time, up to that limit. Maybe if you say 20 golf carts a year in your budget, then you won't have to come to us for approval. I think that's something we had talked about.
That'd probably be a good idea, because we have a track over -- of over past 10 years of what we've been giving out. And one of the things that's frustrating is, on the form that we use, it has to be turned into the town treasurer, we get very few of these coming back in indicating they're not being used. We've probably had, over 10 years, we've probably had six or eight come back into us.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Wish on the floor. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number two, again, is a -- another donation of a round of golf for four, two carts at Timberland Golf to be used as a raffle prize in the donation for Make-A-Wish Foundation. The Make-A-Wish grants wishes to children and life-threatening medical conditions, so we're requesting approval on that donation.
Okay. Motion on that?
Move to approve a donation of a round of golf for four and carts -- two carts to be used as a raffle prize during the 22nd Annual Benefit Concert Fundraiser to benefit Make-A-Wish Foundation. The event will be held at Chicago Sam's in Cromwell, November 15th, 2017.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, John.
Agenda item number three is requesting approval of a fee waiver for the Kensington Garden Club to hold no more than five meetings per year at the Peck Memorial Library Boardroom. The cost shall not exceed $200. So they're requesting this waiver.
Any motion on this?
Move to approve the fee waiver application for the Kensington Garden Club and an amount not to exceed $200.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Four?
Agenda item number four is to bring before you the Berlin Police Contract. There's been an ongoing negotiation for this contract. It's been going on for quite some time, and we're glad to be able to report that we believe we've come to an agreement, and Denise Parsons is here to discuss it.
I'm welcome.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm glad to finally be here on this contract. So as you know, their contract, their last one, expired in 2015. The police union went through some changes in their union membership and decertified and recertified with the new union, so we started negotiations on this contract late. But as you know, because we've come before you before, there were some very serious issues that we were trying to tackle and some benefits that we were trying to put in place. So I think the union is here representing, and we've had some very good conversations. I feel like we've got some really good solutions to some of those problems that we had in the contract, and I can walk you through the agenda item if you want me to, or I can answer questions if you have them.
Maybe just briefly go through it with us?
Sure. So there were a lot of contractual changes related to language and issues within shifts and timing of things. What I have listed in front of you are mostly the financial pieces. So the contract duration will be a five-year. It's two years retroactive back to 2015 and then three years going forward, so it will expire June 30th, 2020. The wage increase that was settled for all five years is two and a quarter per year each year. The shift differential was added for anyone assigned to the third shift of $1.25 per hour for all hours worked on the third shift only. Private duty assignments, which is something that is not funded by the town, they've increased the rate for all officers assigned to private duty. It's for twofold. One, to recognize our officers doing the work, but also to make it consistent for billing purposes. So when a private contractor hires police, they never know what rate they're going to get. So we've capped them all at the top step sergeant rate, and again, this doesn't impact the town at all. The longevity pay will sunset, and that's something that we've gotten in every other contract in the town except for the police, so there's will sunset at the end of this for anybody hired after July 1st, 2017. The long-term disability and disability retirement changes, that was the -- probably the conversation that lasted the longest. If you recall, the majority of the police officers in the last contract were covered under the defined benefit plan, and that defined benefit plan has built within it a disability retirement in the event that somebody became disabled and couldn't work, primarily if they were disabled in the job, in the line of duty. This became a very concerning issue when we had one officer impacted by it, and he was not covered under that benefit. It was only for those in the pension plan. So, I mean, I'll give credit to the police union because they went out and researched. We looked to try some -- tried to find something that was similar. We had a very difficult time. Nobody wanted to ensure such a benefit. I thought they were nuts when they went to Lloyds of London, because you know the types of things that Lloyds of London ensures, but they were willing to do it for us, and they actually came up with a comparable plan. I mean, it's not as generous as the defined benefit folks, but it's one that the police union has agreed to. It provides a five-year disability payment if somebody is disabled and unable to work, and then a lump sum benefit at the end of that. The town is going to provide that benefit for these officers. So that was our biggest challenge and the biggest hurdle to get over. And then the other -- oh, actually, there's a couple more things on here. The 401 plan, if you recall a few years back, the town, all of the other unions except for the police, had revamped the 401 plan for new employees. They lowered the amount of the benefit, had a one-year waiting period, and they already had vesting. The police did not have that. They had a more generous contribution level as well. So we have agreed to a 4% employee contribution and an 8% contribution from the town. So this lowered the town's obligation by 4% for every new hire after July 1. We also incorporated a five-year vesting period on the 401 for the police officers, which means if they do leave us before they've met five years of service, the employer's contribution will come back to the town. Okay. We increased -- had a slight increase to the uniform allowance. We've changed the vacation benefit, so there were two separate sections of vacation, one for those hired prior to 1995 and a different level of benefit for those hired after 1995. We went back and forth on trying to make them more similar, and we kind of compromised and gave a couple of days a little bit early. So at 18 years, they will get two more days of vacation as opposed to waiting to the 20th year for that. The transition of the police to biweekly pay, as you know, our police officers were the last folks who were still on the weekly payroll cycle. They have agreed to go biweekly. That actually has already happened. As of July 1st, we had a side agreement to do that, and that's been working out wonderfully. And then the workers' comp issue, if you recall, we had a grievance on the holiday pay during workers' comp leaves. We've settled that and put it into the contract language, so we cleaned that language up as well. And that's the majority of the big things.
Great. Thank you. While you're up there, questions?
All right.
Yeah?
Can you clarify the 401A contributions? Because here it says, "Police participants contribute 1% to 4% of base pay. Town will match at 200%." So officer, 4%, town, 8%. But then, the next bullet item, it says, "Only first 4% will receive employer match." Right. So is it we match -- we match two to one, or we're matching one to one? We match two to one. Up to 8%. So the employee can put in four, the town will put in eight. However, if an officer wanted to put in more than four, they can put in up to 12% on their own. And will match? Will just match the four with 8%. Oh, gotcha. Okay. All right.
Just a quick question on the -- so the retroactive pay, I assume, I think I heard that we have put that aside the last couple of years?
Yes.
So we have that?
Yes.
In our budget?
Yes.
Which is great to hear. All right. Any other questions? Yeah?
Are the increases for this year included in the budget for this year?
I believe the answer to that is yes. They were budgeting since 2015 for an expected increase on them.
So this is already budgeted into the current budget?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Was it in the current budget at the rate that it -- we ended up getting it, or?
I don't know the answer to that one.
I don't. I believe it was, but I'm not.
Okay.
I talked to Kevin today, and he said, what Kevin told me is that the increase in the retroactive was included in the budget.
Awesome. Sounds pretty good to me.
Yeah, you'll find that in the wage negotiations on townwide.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks, Denise.
Thank you.
You can hang on one minute. We just will say our motion, and if there's anything else. So if we could have a motion on this?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Fraternal Order of Police, Berlin Police Union Lodge 56, for the period of July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2020.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yes.
I would just like to convey my thanks to both the police union and management. I know this was not an easy process, so we thank you all for getting the job done, and it looks like, you know, it works for all parties. So thank you for your efforts. We really appreciate it, and if you can convey that to the rest of the police, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to echo what Rachel said. Thank you all for your hard work on this. I know that this was a long time coming, and I'm glad that we all have something that everybody's happy with, so that's great, and I'm happy to support it. Thanks.
Yeah, same, Mayor. We see the union voted for it already. That's great to hear. I assume you -- the town obviously is happy with it, from what I've read, or as happy as we all can be, but it seems like it's a very good compromise for everybody, so that's great. So, any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks a lot, Denise, for your hard work too. And Kevin Roy.
Agenda item number five, it's time to upgrade the police radio system. The E-911 equipment is state-owned, and a sole vendor for this is AT&amp;T, so we're asking to waive the bidding process so that AT&amp;T can be the exclusive vendor to upgrade the system. And John Klett is here to discuss it.
Okay. How you doing, John?
Good.
Now, is this just a question? I mean, we'll do the motion, but just a question while you're up there. So this is as opposed to the, I mean, a whole new radio system we're putting in, but this is just an upgrade to the E-911 itself?
Well, this is not an upgrade. What it is, is they're moving, they have to, as part of the upgrade of the radios, they have to move dispatch across the hall while they renovate the room. AT&amp;T is the only one that can touch that equipment because it's owned by the state, so they have to move it, and it's our responsibility to pay for the costs of moving it and moving it back.
Of course. Always our responsibility. Why not?
Of course. Oh, that's what it is.
Oh, that's what it is. Okay. Okay, great. All right, let's take a motion on this.
Okay. Move to waive the bidding process as AT&amp;T is the exclusive vendor for the state-owned E-911 equipment, or 911, and as such is the only vendor authorized to serve this equipment, and this is the best interest of the town.
Second on that?
Second.
Heard the questions? Yes.
Where is the temporary dispatch center going and what is that dislocating?
The entire, the entire dispatch center is going to move across the hall.
Just across the hall, okay.
Except, we've got a room, Doug's been working on a room there for us, so, and they're currently moving the stuff so that once, we're going to wait till after the fair and then once that's done, they'll move everything across the hall, renovate the room and then move it into the new room.
Okay, so where it's going is, there's nothing vital that dispatch is displacing there?
No, they'll have everything. They're going to move the entire center over there, it may not be as pretty as it, you know, but it'll be, it'll be forgable.
Okay.
Good. Great. Any other comments? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved. Thanks, John.
Agenda item number six, is authorization, is authorization to amend the option agreement for the land lease between the Berlin Housing Authority and the town for the property adjacent to 143 Percival Avenue. This, this, they've had the option there and it's been renewed and renewed, well, it's, it's expired, it's time to renew it again and they need to renew it for a period of two years. Part of that's due to the, the financing that the housing authority needs to obtain. There's an agreement currently being worked on between the town, the housing authority, and the Department of Environmental, Energy and Environmental Protection of the State of Connecticut because of, of that, of the land restriction on, on that property. So, both Chris Edge and Joe Bajorski are here to, to discuss the, the issue.
What say you, Mr. Edge?
Sure, one of the issues that had come up was the restrictions on the land. The thirty-year lease or the thirty-year option seems to fit both the town's needs, DEP, who had the restriction, seems to be happy with it, and I think right now the housing authority is as well. This was the biggest issue we had. We seem to have gotten over that hurdle. Again, this language and doing the option would move it ahead so they can, again, go for financing when it comes back through both state and federal monies. I think this is the best bet for everyone and really gives them an option as well as the, the option to continue working together.
Okay. Mr. Bajorski, just, how, how are we doing with all this now?
Well, as Mr. Edge has stated, and Joe Bajorski, any butter not laying for the record, as Mr. Edge has stated, we've been involved in negotiations with DEP, our financing people making sure that the terms of the ground lease don't negatively impact us moving forward with financing and then dealing with the attorneys to make sure the language, you know, meets everybody's requirements. So, I think we're at that point where we can, you know, pull the trigger on it. The problem behind the lease period is the fact that, you know, in order for us to have filed application this November, we would have had to have started the process back at the end of May, beginning of June of this year. So, we're effectively missing our application deadline for this year. So, the next application deadline would be November of 2018 and basically with notification of award probably March of 2019, so.
So, this extension is really just for the purposes of the financing? We're, we're through the whole, as I've heard you say, but I always like to ask again, we're through the whole DEP issue? We think everyone's happy with that?
Yes, I think, you know, by, we're, by able, by leasing one portion of the parcel, the plot that's owned by the town and purchasing outright the Knights of Columbus parcel, we're able to accomplish our goals. The thirty-thirty lease term, while not optimal, you know, allows us enough room to get what we need done, done in terms of financing.
Good. Attorney DiNaprio, anything to add? Have you reviewed?
No, the lease was, again, as we talked about several months back, necessitated by the fact that DEP wasn't willing to grant a release of this property from the open space agreement, which encompassed other properties as well. So, the conservation easement was not something DEP was willing to give up and by leasing with a restricted use that matches the use allowed by the open space agreement, it obviates the need for the release.
Good. Well, it sounds like we actually made some progress perhaps, finally.
There was, there was some creative thinking on all parts to get it to the, to this point.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to...
Go right ahead, it's been a while since I've been here.
Some really, yeah, simple questions here that I'm going to, so as I'm looking at this map, what we are leasing is, is, and I don't know if you have one, Joe?
I don't, but I'm pretty familiar with the...
No, no you're not.
The land on the south side of the Knights of Columbus property?
It's going to be on the east side of the parcel.
On the east side, okay, so where the, the fields are in the back?
It's between, it's alongside the fields, but it runs between the Knights of Columbus property and the housing authority property, Marjorie Moore, so it's bounded by properties along Robbins Road, those would make the southern boundary.
Okay, but there is no anticipation that you are going to be doing anything with those fields or disturbing kind of what that use is for now?
No, the purpose, you know, going back to the beginning of time, the purpose behind this whole ground lease is because when we went in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and started the whole process, it encompassed the whole eight acre parcel. To unwind that whole process would be significantly expensive, so a ground lease would allow us to save money and time by just leasing that property instead of subdividing it again.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any, any other questions for, yes?
Not a question, but a rather a comment. I saw a couple of silly letters between the housing authority and the Little League and I want to be sure that that's resolved. Jack, I thought Jack and I had it resolved and I saw something from the housing authority I didn't really appreciate. So, before I'm prepared to go forward on this, I want assurances that the Little League's going to be held to what we agreed on and that they won't be threatened or, in the future, or harmed by anything done by the housing authority.
Well, the property, the, the Little League is actually not at the same location. It's at, it's at the, it's near the, the senior center.
I know where it is, I'm just...
Okay, and we have talked, the, the issue there is, the Little League, when they, when they did the grading, they did grade onto the housing authority property. I talked to Joe today about it. It's, it's, we don't, we don't see it as being a, a major issue. It's a, it's a thing that we have to get together, talk about it, and we may just have to write, we have to write an easement because they went onto the other, onto the housing authority property. But Joe, I mean, you and I talked about it today and we, I just haven't had a chance to get with Bill. We think, between the three of us, then we're going to settle that.
Yeah, for Councilman Russell's purposes, I mean, the housing authority is not at fault here, the Little League encroached upon the site.
I'm aware of what went on there and I worked with Jack to solve it.
Well, I wasn't aware because, again, our discussions was in terms of...
As long as I have your word, that will resolve it.
We've talked today?
Again, the housing authority's concerns rely on the stability of the parking area and, you know, that was our concern from the get-go because the, the actual construction did not match the submitted design plans.
I'm aware of what happened.
So, yeah, so we have a parking structure that we need to make sure is maintained and, you know, we're not paying to renovate it should erosion occur or something along those lines happen. So, we had a discussion and I touched base today with the town manager on this issue and to date, I mean, I don't have anything from the housing authority, you know, for the housing authority purposes in terms of an easement or a whole harmless agreement from the Little League referencing the site, so.
But, but there is a solution?
We feel there's a solution, we just haven't had a chance to meet and I, my intention is to have both the housing authority and the Little League get together, we'll, we'll work on an agreement. We've looked at it, the grading will not impact the, the parking lot as, there's a row of trees there to stabilize the bank, the, the, there was NASB build, survey conducted, there is an encroachment, but we'll, we'll settle that with an easement.
Great. Okay. Good, Peter?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad we discussed that, that's good to, to hear.
The housing authority is a happening place.
Lately it has been, yes it has. Usually it's very quiet, but it has not been the last several years. That's okay, that means we're making some progress, so that's, that's a good thing. Okay, any other questions? All right, so let's, we take a motion on this?
Okay, move to authorize the interim town manager to enter into an amendment to the option agreement between the Town of Berlin and the Berlin Housing Authority to extend the option period to October 31st, 2019 and to modify the options such as the housing authority would buy the former Knights of Columbus site at 143 Percival Avenue and lease a portion of the adjacent site in the map attached, map eight dash four, block fifty-four, lot sixty-five for a thirty-year period with a thirty-year option, subject to the review and approval of Corporation Council.
And that's less a portion to retain by the town as shown on the survey, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Second on this?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, so moved. All right, thank you, go forward and try and build us some...
Don't go anywhere.
He's not going too far.
No, I know he's going to the next one, but try, try and build us some.
Just one other thing, the timeline we're working on is the tax financing timeline, but we are exploring other options for financing. So, if in the event we're successful in some of these other areas, we will pull the trigger on that, so the two-year window might be a little bit shorter than two years. So, just to let you know.
And you know better than anybody how dire a need we have, this type of housing, so we appreciate all the, the hard work to get to this point because it has been quite a journey.
Yes, it has. Thank you.
Number seven.
Agenda item number seven, Joe, don't go away. Berlin owns a mobile home park and we've talked about before possibly selling that or, or working on, on transferring it to another agency. We have talked previously to the housing authority, they have expressed an interest in working on some, some arrangement. So, what we're requesting is that you grant the interim town manager permission to begin negotiation for a potential sale of that, of that mobile home park to the housing authority. And, again, Joe is here along with John O'Brien to ask, answer any questions on their, on their part.
Okay. So, just from the town perspective, Joe, John, Jack, obviously this, we, best move, right? We're thinking that we've had this property and we're not really in the landlord business, so.
Yeah, you know, it's, among the staff, we feel it's, you know, we're not in the business of being mobile home park managers and it would, they would be better suited for that and I believe it sort of, if it does fit their, their, you know, their, their thing in life as far as providing low, low-income housing and things, it fits into their business better than it does the town.
Wait, so Joe, you're...
We're agreeable to it. We, I mean, this has been discussed through various administrations, you know, John O'Brien, our commissioner from the housing authority, has been kind of spearheading this because I've been kind of focused on the Knights, but, you know, we've identified several areas where we could improve operations and, you know, kind of change a few things and, you know, we looked at the market rights, they're being paid and, you know, there's areas for improvement in that thing, not criticizing anybody from the town for their operation, but it's not, you know, it's not something they're involved in on a day-to-day basis. We have the systems in place in terms of contractors and landscapers and the like to come in and do what we need to do there, you know, for a fairly cost-effective basis.
That's good and obviously, this will be back to us once we...
Yes.
Come up with some type of agreement, but yeah.
It's most likely going to have to go through an eight twenty-four review and also the council will have to review that. Just one other item of note, the town currently does not receive any property taxes on the land. It receives property taxes on the trailers themselves. Once this comes under housing authority purview, we'll be entering into a pilot agreement with the town, so there will be some taxes provided, probably not a lot, but some is better than none. So, you know, so this will return back to the tax rolls.
Okay.
Joe, I know that you and I had talked about this years ago as well, but one of the, the, I think, reasons that we've been reluctant to really make, you know, moves with this was we did not, and it, you know, we didn't want to dislocate people who, who are living there currently. And I know that the housing authority is typically for elderly, disabled, low-income, I, and I know you can't give assurances right now, but, you know, I, I think it would be important, I know I won't be here sitting on the council when this comes up next time, but to know that, that you all would hold harmless those folks who are currently living there and would not want to...
Yeah, I mean, this would be like any other real estate transaction, the deeds or the leases that they have in place for their lots would maintain in effect through the transfer of title from the town to the housing authorities, so those would remain in full force and effect. You know, I can't speak for myself, I don't know how long I'll be on the housing authority, but, you know, down the road, it's a piece of land that the town has. Will somebody see it as a potential redevelopment opportunity? It's possible. You know, right now, what we have there, I think, fits that site properly. I don't think you're going to get too much more onto that site out of what's there now. My goal as chairman of the housing authority right now is to complete Knights of Columbus, so any other development projects, I do not anticipate, you know, until we get the shovel in the ground at Knights, so. And that also is dependent on financing and everything else, so, you know.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes.
Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I recall, we got that park a few years ago and it was to satisfy or help the people who were there.
Yes.
And we were not supposed to transfer any of those to anyone who wasn't there at the time, is that correct?
Well, there's been some discussion about that. John's done some research on that. Pretty much all those houses, with the exception maybe four trailers, have been transferred. So, not really sure, there's some language in the lease agreement that's references a special act, several special acts, and that basically restricted them from transferring title for a period of three years after moving into the Berlin site. And then after that, they could sell them according to another special act. So, there's some legislative history here that I'm not familiar with, that I'm not sure of all the details as to how this all, you know, transpired, but basically, according to John's research, there's probably three or four mobile homes that are original, everybody else is transferred, if not once, twice.
Interesting.
But yes, you are correct, the original intent was to allow those people that were at the mobile home park where CVS was to tran, to remain in town and basically be, you know, members of this community. Somewhere along the line that was changed and they were allowed to sell their, or sell their mobile homes on the lots and go from there. But I'm not sure who made that call or, we did some research on it, but we weren't able to discover actual language.
Okay, interesting. Okay, any other questions of Mr. Bajorski? Hearing none, a motion on this?
Move to authorize Jack Healy, the interim town manager, to enter into no gate negotiations with the Berlin Housing Authority for the sale of the Berlin Mobile Home Park.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye. Opposed, so moved. Thank you, thank you, thank you guys.
Agenda item number eight, is an authoriz, requesting authorization to file an application for a lots of grant for the Kensington Road Bridge. The Kensington Road Bridge was identified as being one, it was deficient. We recently report, we received a report last week from the State of Connecticut, they had done an inspection, also told us that the bridge was deficient, needed work. Fortunately, we had already identified it as one that needed to have some type of a retrofit. Chris and Jim Mahoney and myself and Jim Horrible worked on a grant application along with Cardinal Engineering from the Capitol Region Council of Governments. We received a grant in the amount of $738,000 to renovate that bridge and so, Chris is here to answer any questions, but requesting authorization to continue.
Okay, let's, so I guess we're going to get that grant, I hope, for $738,000?
That is the plan at this point. I've been attending these meetings for probably about two years and this one had come up and it happened to be that we had a handful of bridges on the list and we happen to be, again, you don't want to be on the top five list for bad bridges, but when there's money involved, it's a good place to be. So, that's really where we ended up being and the good thing is between the folk here as well as Cardinal Engineering, we've worked with, able to put a nice grant package together and we're hoping this will go through and we can get the monies to redo the bridge on their nickel.
Chris, just, is this the one over the railroad bridge, one over the river that we widened ten, fifteen years ago?
No, this one is, you may not even know it's there. It's a series of five pipes in a, in a, in a structure. It's right in front, it's between, it's right near the post office. It's where the water comes down from the dam. It's, when you go look at it, it's a series of five old galvanized pipes plus a structure that was put in place. The five pipes are probably put in the fifties and like all those pipes are put in, then at the water interface with, with the pipe, it corrodes and rusts. So, what happens is it starts to fail there and the pipe starts to deform. There's a couple ways of being able to correct that. One, which I'm familiar with and I'd like to try is to slip line it. What you do is you get a liner that you're able to put in there and then you grow out the annulus and, and you're able to do it without closing the bridge. The amount of money that we're, that we're, that we were given in the grant, basically, we can do the entire bridge for, for, for the grant, we wouldn't have to use very little, if any, town funds.
Excellent.
Awesome.
That's great.
Rain's my favorite word.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to apply to the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation for a lots of grant for the Kensington Road Bridge project in the amount of $738,000.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor? Aye, aye, opposed, so moved. Thank you, Chris.
Chris, stay there.
Don't leave, don't leave.
Agenda item number nine, what we're requesting here is that, is that we'd like to amend the amount of money requested for Cardinal Engineering to do the design work on the center of town. As you know, we're, we're looking at that square, Derrick Queen, the center of town. We did some work there last year, we're looking at this square as a whole. We went out, we, we solicited RFQs, identified Cardinal as the firm we wanted to work with for doing the design work there. They gave us a proposal for a certain amount of money. We asked approval and you granted us approval to do that. Subsequent to that, we held a meeting, which is one of the things we wanted to do, is make sure that they met the needs of the business owners in that area, so we had a meeting actually at Kensington Pizza and, but, but it was good because all of the business owners came and other people came and, and provided input. After that meeting, we went back and we, Cardinal Engineering looked at what they're, what they had proposed to us. In order to, to, there were so many suggestions that, that were given that we'd like to be able to evaluate, that we wanted to make sure that we do an entire survey of, of that area so we have a good baseline and then, and then have Cardinal look at several of the options. So, it's going to require about another $14,000 to do all this work. We're requesting approval so that we can continue with that plan to address that area. I believe the grant is for $500,000. We're requesting additional $14,000 for design work. I think it's important that we get a good foundation to build off of. We, we did ask, we did ask for input from the, the business owners and I'd like to build off of that.
Great. And so, based upon that meeting, the, the business owners were, I mean, pretty happy with, you think with what we're going to do? I mean, I know they had different thoughts, obviously, I understand that, but...
I, I believe they were receptive to talking about options. I think a couple things they would love to see, can we get a couple spots back on Main Street? I think a couple things as well is having a closer relationship with both Fire Department and Police Department, I know especially to, as Jim Simon said previously, coming around that corner, as well as looking at, is there maybe some areas for public parking? So, I think there's a number of things going to be looking at. Again, the biggest thing is take a look at the triangle, do a full survey, figure out what we have to start with. That was one of the things that I think was missed the first time through, which ended up causing some of the issues. I believe Cardinal, because of that meeting, really was able to find out from the different resident, and the good thing too, it was property owners, it was businesses, we got great feedback from people and they were very open, they were honest and some of them thought it was great, some of them didn't like it, but they said, where do we go from here? We want to work with you. So, it really was reaching out to them and I mean, it was a great first step.
That's great. Good. So, hopefully we'll have some success at making them more happy with that design. Okay, so, a motion on this?
Move to approve the proposal from Cardinal Engineering for additional services in the amount of $14,000 to increase the maximum contract sum to $57,200 and to authorize the amount of $14,000 to increase the maximum contract sum to $57,200, and to authorize the interim town manager to enter into a contract amendment with Cardinal Engineering for $14,000 to be funded from account steep Main Street, streetscape improvements, phase two.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Agenda item number 10 is to lock in the diesel contract for fiscal year 2017, 2018. If you remember, I think the last meeting, Jim Simon, or two minutes ago, we came before you, and asked permission to go through the summer using, just purchasing the diesel fuel from our supplier on the harbor, based on harbor price, and that we would negotiate once we got to September, because typically the prices go down. Neither one of us predicted either Harvey or Irma. So Jim called and said, hey, it looks like the prices are gonna go up. We have, Jim has gone ahead and signed a contract. We felt that between Jim, myself, and Kevin, it was important to lock it in. It's gonna be a little bit more money, about $8,000, but we felt that we wanted to cap our risk, because it was town funds. Right now, you know, who knows what's gonna happen with Irma, so we felt it was important. I think it was a good idea, and Jim Simon's here, he can express his view, but we are asking approval of that contract.
Okay. Any motion?
Move to waive the bidding process and award the contract for the purchase of 33,000 gallons of diesel for the 2017, 2018 year to East River Energy, since this is the best interest of the town.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Okay. Agenda item number 11, authorization to enter into an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for a historic preservation grant for the Worthington Meeting House. There is, I think you know, they're currently doing some design development for work in the meeting house to renovate it. Doug Solak has been working with them on that project. They're at the point now where they'd like to apply for another grant for the final design drawings, and so we need permission or authorization from the, a resolution from the council to allow the interim town managers to enter into that agreement. Doug is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Motion?
Move to resolve that Jack Healy, interim town manager for the town of Berlin, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this town a certain contract with the state of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, and to fix the town seal.
Second?
Second on that?
Discussion on this? Questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 12 is the purchase order approval for sole-source contractor Automated Building Systems. Town of Berlin has an energy management control system. It's an Alton Building Automation System. The sole-source provider in New England is Automated Building Systems, so we're requesting approval to waive the bidding process because they are sole-source. Doug is here, Doug Solak is here to answer any questions.
Okay. We have a motion on this?
Okay. Move to authorize the interim town manager to increase the purchase orders for sole-source service provider Automated Building Systems of Glastonbury, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $25,000 collectively.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Just a quick question. Don't, you can stay there. It's not actually even on this. Before you left, I just wanted to say, you guys did a great job on the schools. Thank you for getting them ready and open, and the kids may not say they appreciate it, but I know they like going into a fixed-up school. So, thank you and your staff.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Just before Doug's gonna leave, I do just want you to note that the council chambers have been renovated while you were gone. You have new ceiling, new lights, new sound system, and a TV set, so I think, you know, Doug and his guys did a really good job during the month of August pulling this together.
Yeah. Looks good.
Yeah, he did a nice job, Doug, and actually, I was over at the tennis courts and the basketball court for an event there, and I heard some great comments as well about you and your staff and what you guys did over there. So I know you put in some extra work, and that saved us a little bit of money, and you did, but you did a great job, so thanks for that, too, as well as our very bright chambers. Maybe like a little bit darker? Yeah, maybe like a little bit darker, maybe. I don't know, it's okay.
I'll show you the zipper.
Yeah, that's what we need.
I was better in the dark.
Yeah, right, everything, exactly.
Oh, he's a little younger in the dark, too. Yeah. All right. Anyway, thanks, Doug, for everything.
Agenda item number 13 is to request to waive the bid processing for valve replacement and award to Harper Hanes Fluid Control. This is for the Water Control Authority. Ray Jerome is here to discuss this. Harper Hanes supplies the valves, or the pressure-reducing valves for the system. We've had good history with them, and Ray is here to discuss the retrofit.
Okay. We'll take a motion first?
Move to waive the bidding requirements and award Harper Hanes Fluid Control, Inc., to rebuild pressure valves at Beckley Road and Elton Road, well-filled well 2A, not to exceed $12,000, as this is in the best interest of the project and the town.
Second on this?
Second.
Discussion? So, we'll be good with this once we?
We'll be good with it in East Berlin, because we're buying water from Cromwell purposely now, because at this point, we don't need it, but we're afraid that if we turn it on, the Beckley Road RPZ unit does not, it'll malfunction, and we'll have more main breaks over in East Berlin. And the one at 2A has never been done, as far as I know, so it just needs to be upgraded.
Okay. Great. Any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Stay there, Ray, please. Agenda item number 14 is to request to waive the bidding process to award PJSLLC Intral to perform various meter improvements at the Elton Road Well Field. This firm had done the work previously on our well 2A, and currently now we're bringing well 1A, needs to be upgraded also. It makes sense to stay with the same firm and not to change firms when we're working on the systems down there. They have the same meters, same control systems, so Ray is here to discuss this request.
Okay. Motion on this?
Move to waive the bidding requirements and award PJSLLS DBA Intral to provide materials and labor to perform various meter improvements for well 1B at Elton Road Well Field, as this is in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Same thing? Some stuff we need to do?
Basically, we need it particularly for 1B, and then this particular company, we found out through SB Church, was the well driller. He specializes in transmission and instrumentation. We had asked many, actually about three or four electricians before that, nobody wanted to touch any instrumentation, so he was one of the first ones, and as Jack mentioned, we had a very good history with him.
Great. Thanks. No further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. One more, Ray.
Agenda item number 15 is to request to waive bid for Leonard Engineering for oversight work at Rowley Street Water Booster Station. Leonard is the one that designed the water booster station for that location. It will allow us to purchase water from MDC, up to 500,000 gallons of water a day. One of the things we're trying to do with the Water Control Commission is to have diverse sources of water. We currently purchase water from New Britain, from Cromwell, we have our own well system. This would give us a fourth source, will allow us to negotiate rates and make sure that we have adequate supplies and good stable supplies of water for the town.
Great. Motion on this?
Move to waive the bidding requirements and award Leonard Engineering, Inc., oversight of the water booster station replacement project in the amount of $13,600, not to exceed $15,640, as this is in the best interest of the project and the town.
Second on this?
Second.
Second.
Just a comment, Leonard Engineering, as he was mentioned, did the design work. This is a fairly complex process. The United Concrete built the vault, it's 10 by 10 by 20, and it's going into a very small location on Taco Bell, right in front of Taco Bell. It's gonna be taking on a part of DOT right away. It's also in a very busy area, so we do feel that we do need an engineer on hand. We are also gonna be working with the MDC, and their water lines and our water lines, and there's also a sewer line. So it's a very complicated location, so we felt it would be best to have an engineer on hand routinely for that process.
That's great. I'm glad you're working on that one. That was the one, right, that we had discussed a while ago? Is that the one that, the billing with MDC had been?
I'm still working on that one.
You're still working on that one? Okay, that's another one? Okay, well.
I gotta sneak up on that one further.
All right. Oh, I got it. Well, you know what? I appreciate all your hard work on all this, bringing us up to date with our water supply system is obviously incredibly important, so appreciate that. Any further?
Yeah, I just want to say something, Ray. You know, we approved three things here in a row, but, you know, I just want to trust your judgment. I mean, in my business, I bid on a lot of wastewater treatment plants. There's not a lot of people that want to do this work, so when people see that, you know, we're waiving the bidding requirements, it's because there's a reason.
I appreciate that comment. That's exactly right, and then, as Jack had pointed out earlier, too, once you find somebody you can trust and do a good job, it's almost like you want to come back. And then most of these projects are just barely over $10,000. So if that upper limit had been a little higher, I probably wouldn't have had to come to before you. One of them was a little bit higher, because it was a little bit more complicated, but that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Nothing further? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Agenda number 16 is a request for catch basin materials related to roadway repaving projects. We want to utilize Connecticut DAS contract number 17PSX0009 to purchase necessary concrete catch basins from United Concrete. The state bid was basically was United Concrete or Cromwell Concrete, and typically, those are the two in the state that you purchase from. This year, United Concrete is the low bid. We utilize that for when we're rebuilding roads and having to sometimes add catch basins to parking lots and things like that. We don't, we're asking to go up to $30,000. That would be the max that we would purchase.
Okay, thank you. Motion on this?
Sure. Move to utilize the Connecticut DAS contract number 17PSX0009 to purchase the necessary concrete catch basin material from United Concrete of Yalesville, Connecticut, for an amount of $30,000 per fiscal year through December 31, 2019.
Second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 17 is to request to award a contract for treated salt purchase for 2017, 2018. We have not, it's time to start thinking about this. The town of Berlin purchases their salt from Cargill, the icing technology, with Clearland, it's a Clearland product. What that means is there's an additive added to the salt to prevent it from, when you put it on the road, it doesn't bounce and fall, go off the road. It's supposed to stick to the road and more efficiently treat the snow and the ice on the road. Requesting approval through the Connecticut Regional Council of Governments, bid number number 656 for that time, $77.52 per ton. When we signed the contract, we're obligated to up to 50% of the annual estimated quantity. There would be no problem, we would guarantee that we purchased that, because, as you know, a couple years ago, we pre-purchased, we were able to store, you know, at least that amount in our storage area, so we would easily purchase that amount of money, amount of salt. We don't purchase ahead of time, though, we try to phase it out, so if we do have a mild winter, we don't have to overbuy.
Okay. Great. Thanks. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the use of Cargill deicing technology for treated road salt utilizing the Capital Regional Council of Governments contract number 656 for snow and ice control through June 30, 2018.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah.
Jack, a couple of questions on the actual technology. So, it is a registered trademark, which leads me to believe it's patented. Do we know when the patent runs out, so that the price might be reduced, if it's gonna be, start to be produced generically? I'm assuming it's similar to chemicals that are used on golf courses and that sort of thing? Do we, I know Jim has left, but just curious if we have any idea when we might not have to buy a branded product?
No, I didn't, but you don't have to buy the branded project. We happen to purchase from them, because their bid is low. There are different, there's a couple different suppliers in the state of Connecticut. You know, my previous position, I purchased from Gateway Terminal in New Haven. This comes from Albany. And part of it, you try to do is find somebody who's reliable. A couple years ago, Gateway shut us off. You know, we were sitting there in snowstorms, and we had like two or three shipments, and that doesn't cut the mustard. We've had very good luck here in Berlin with Cargill. They seem to be an adequate supplier. They're not, you know, and we are looking at what would be a low bid for the product, or, excuse me, the, yeah, the product.
Yeah, product.
Excuse me, it's a product bid. So, I'm not sure when the patent runs out, and all that's for is, it's the additive that they use, actually, it's the typical salt, but they all have different additives that they put, so when it hits the road, it doesn't splatter off the road. If you use raw salt, you know, there's a certain percentage which just bounces and goes off the road, and then a car's hit, it just scatters, so this is an additive that sort of sticks to the road, it also sticks to your car.
Yeah.
The best thing to do is if you apply a liquid down, because that has the most efficient, but that's, you know, you have to go out and reapply it, reapply it, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Agenda item number 18 is the bid waiver for the GIS annual maintenance contract through the engineering department. New England GeoSystems has for many years provided us with the GIS system for the town. The annual cost is $30,000. We negotiate that each year. We try to do a lot of the work in-house as far as maintaining the system. The system's utilized by pretty much all departments in the town, and even residents can access it. At this point, they house a lot of our information. It would be very difficult to go out and renegotiate this, and then with another firm, and get the same pricing that we currently get. We feel it's in the best interest of the town to continue the relationship with New England GeoSystems.
Great, thanks. Motion on this?
Move to waive the bidding procedure and award a contract for GIS annual maintenance to New England GeoSystem of Middletown, Connecticut, for an amount not to exceed $30,000, as they are the sole-source provider for our existing GIS system, and since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I see that this has gone down, huh, in price, from what I'm reading in my notes here?
It went down from the original bid.
Yeah.
It's been, since I've been here, the three years I've been here, it's been steady, at $30,000, $35,000 in that range. So it hasn't gone up since I've been here. I know from the original bid, it has gone down, yes.
Yeah, that's great. That's unusual. That's great, though. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number 19 is for the federal local bridge program commitment. We applied, we worked with Cardinal Engineering, there's different programs that come out. There's a program that started with DOT a couple years ago, where you can work with the DOT on doing just maintenance on a bridge and have them do the same type of contract that you would normally in 80/20 split. This is advantageous to the town, because now you're not in a situation where you're having to take a bridge out of service. You actually could do the work on the bridge while it's in service, and at a much lower cost, so you don't wait till the bridge is completely, needs complete rehab. You do maintenance on it, and they help reimburse you for that. We applied for four bridges in town. We were awarded those four bridges, they're identified in the information here, and if And if we enter into the agreement, we can start the process of picking out an engineer and going down and, and starting down the path of designing the corrections on those bridges.
Great. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to execute any and all documents required to allow the town of Berlin's participation in the federal local bridge program in conjunction with the rehabilitation of bridge numbers 04476, 05224, 06122, and 06123.
Thank you. Second on this?
Second.
So we never have done this before? We've never been in this program before?
No, the first bridges to do that happened to be in Litchfield. They started two years ago.
Oh.
And so we, we actually, Town Litchfield was the first ones to apply for it, and they, they received two bridges, and since then I've got a third bridge. It came to our attention that we had four bridges that needed, were in the same condition. And what it does is instead of waiting for a bridge to completely deteriorate, you can, you know, all we're going to do is we're going to remove the decks, we're going to put new membranes down on this, we'll realign, then we'll put new, probably some guardrails and things like that. So the bridges are basic, are almost as new. You're going to do four bridges here, the estimated cost is less than a million dollars. So we're looking at less than about $200,000 to $250,000 per bridge. You know, if we're doing, if you look at the price of the Farmington Avenue Bridge, we're at almost $3 million, so, you know, it's very advantageous for the town to do this. We're going to get 80% of our funds back, so our commitment on this is total is maybe is less than $200,000 to get those bridges retrofitted.
That's great. Well, thanks for bringing your Litchfield, Litchfield knowledge to Berlin. Sounds like we needed it. Okay, any other questions, comments? Yes, Rachel?
So for the four bridges, if we apply and let's say we get three of the four, or we get all four?
We already got all four.
Okay, oh, we got, so.
Yeah.
My question is if we reimbursed 80% of it, we have to have that money upfront, correct?
Yeah.
Are we going to have the money to do that upfront budgeted? And will this be in this fiscal year? Have we budgeted so it'll be?
Next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year? So you'll have to make sure that you have enough for the 20% to cover all four?
Correct. And you can start down, you can start down the path and not have the money set aside yet.
Okay.
So we can start down the path of picking, doing the RFQ, selecting the engineering and all like that before we get to the point where we have to commit the funds.
And are these going to be, roads need to be closed type bridges that need to be fixed? Or they can be, they can still be used for the majority of the time?
Majority of the time, they'll be able to. At some point, when you're putting the membrane down, it's more efficient, because you, you remove the, the, the actual pavement, and then you put the membrane down, then you seal the bridge, and then you put the pavement back on. It's more efficient if you could do it all at one time, but you could do it side and side.
But it's not going to be like the Farmington, especially, I'm thinking Berlin Road, that's, that's a heavily utilized road.
No, it won't be, it won't be like Farmington Avenue.
Okay, all right. For Berlin's street, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Some move.
Agenda item number 20. We're requesting to award a bid for, excuse me, yeah, award a bid for road construction materials for town roadways. Typically, it's various stone gravel materials, minor repairs, minor asphalt materials like that for when we repair a road or sidewalks. We're asking it under state contract, DAS contract. We're asking to go through for the, by two minutes concrete through December 31st, 2018, and for the other materials to June 30th, 2019. We buy minor amounts, we don't store a lot on sites, we're able to go over the truck, bring it back and fix, you know, fix a road or something like that. It's also advantageous like in a situation where you have a water main leak, you're able to go and get the materials and, and bring it back and fix the road. And as Ray said, we were able to keep the road essentially, we had it open next morning, so we were able to do that type of work.
Great. Okay, motion on this?
Move to approve utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS contract number 17 PSX 0046 and 15 PSX 0232 for road construction materials and award the contract to Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. through the life of the, of the so noted contracts.
Second on this?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move.
Agenda number 21. The Public Works is starting to look at lining the roads, doing line striping. The Capitol Regional Council of Governments has a contract number 652, traffic guidelines, it secures pricing for different types of, of line, lines on the road using different materials. There are different types of paints that go down, different reflectivity. There, we'd like to, approval on being able to purchase those, those services using that, that bid, and we would select the most cost-effective and qualified contractor for the type of paint and application that we're going to do at that time. Typically, there's only two or three that actually do that type of work, and actually one's probably more reliable than the other, so we'd like to be able to have the, the flexibility to pick which one is most cost-effective for the type of work we're going to be doing.
Okay. Motion on this?
Okay. Move to award a bid and authorize the town manager to enter into a unit price contract to purchase street line painting services utilizing the Crag contract number 652-A with the most cost-effective and qualified contractor.
Okay, second on this?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Rachel?
Just if you're using the Crag contract, I know a couple of years ago, we had a problem with one of the contractors, I believe they're out of the Boston area. I would just say make sure that they're not the Crag contractor, because I do know we had some significant issues with them.
As I said, there are some that are more, that are better than others.
Okay.
Let's find the more better than others.
I wasn't that good in English.
I'm sure you will. I'm sure you will. We got the point. Any other questions, comments? Any none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move.
All right. Agenda number 22. The public golf course commission ordinance. The ordinance committee has met and has now, has, has gone over and drafted an ordinance. You should have gotten a redraft by email over the weekend. What, and I just want to point out that there are some differences in that between what you were given in the written material and what you got in the email. That was, because of the timing, there was, I, the staff reviewed what the ordinance was that was written, that you got written. There were some inconsistencies between that and our charter and our job descriptions and things, so we worked with Attorney Coppola to, to, to make them consistent. And what we're asking is that you authorize the interim town manager to schedule and advertise to hold a public hearing and possibly consider and act on the ordinance at your next regularly scheduled council meeting on the 19th.
Okay. Great, thanks. A little motion on that?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to schedule and advertise for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017 at 7:00 PM to hold a public hearing and possibly consider and act upon an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Establishing a Public Golf Course Commission."
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Discussion, we, so the ordinance committee, to update the rest of the council, we had several meetings with quite a bit of public input, people that have been involved with the golf course in different, different positions. So this is the ordinance we came up with, and I'm glad that some of those changes were, were made, so I wanted to make sure you guys have that before our next meeting, before we have the public hearing. It appears that from all the input, you guys can speak up on the ordinance committee, but that seems like we came up with a fairly good ordinance from what I heard with the comments from, from the people, from the public. That's sort of where we're at.
Can I ask questions? Since I may be the only one not on the board?
Yeah.
Or one other one?
One other one.
So I have a couple of questions. One, I know that before Denise left, she had actually been talking with Jonathan about this for, for quite a while, and she was the one that actually brought it to the Charter Commission as a, as a proposal for the, for the new charter revisions. And I know that when she and I had been talking about it prior, there, there were some concerns about maybe making it more than seven people, maybe having either advisory people on there, like someone from the men's league or the women's league, maybe someone from the Conservation Commission. And I know Sam LaMaglia was, was very in tune with what she was saying at the time, as well as making sure that Jonathan was very involved in the discussions and in the day-to-day with the commission. So my question is, were any of those pieces that had been brought to light before it actually went through with the charter change vote put into this or taken into consideration when you were building this revision? Because I do see it's just seven, kind of no restrictions on that.
There was a lot of discussion on how to select the people, should there be one person for an amendment, and we felt any commissioner will be appointed by the council, and we didn't want to limit ourselves, and we're hoping that these groups will put forth good candidates and reasons why. And it's up to the council to make sure we get a good cross-section of concerned people.
Good. And one other question I had on this is it talked about either a town manager and/or golf profession, not golf professional, but golf director. So my, my question is, for all our other commissions, we have a staff liaison, if you will. So Helen does planning and zoning, you know, Kevin does audit. Is, will it be Jonathan?
That was some, if you look at the draft I sent you, if you notice, we put the director of golf, and we had more interaction. One of the things I, we found when we, the staff looked through it, it didn't have enough connection with the, with the director of golf.
Right.
We tried to make it stronger, and that the director of golf has certain functions, and that what had happened is they looked like it had been realigned where the commission was going to do the golf, the director of golf. That's why, if you look at the second draft, that's why I want to point it out, it's back to the director of golf does, does the budget, and the director of golf does things, the commission is, and he works with them, but the director of golf's the one that prepares the documents and things like that. That's, and I want to make sure you point, look at that second draft I sent you, because that's what we observed when we, when we read through it, and so we made those modifications. So when you got that, and if you look at the last page, you'll see like there's several things that are, the last, like four or five things are bullet items which really dictate what, what's, how it's going to function.
Okay, good. Okay, that clarifies. Thank you. And Jonathan did have some input into this, correct? I mean, he was part of the conversation, I'm, I'm hoping.
Yes, he definitely was. Along with Len was involved, and Kevin Delaney was involved. Yeah, we, we made this team effort to look at this.
Okay.
Yeah, and we also, at all the meetings, we had really, I think, representatives from most of the clubs at the, at Timberland, and we stressed to them, please, who applies, we kind of want you guys to pick our candidates that you think would be good for the golf course. Don't maybe leave it so much up to the council, but at least send us some great candidates that are, you know, experienced there and have a vested interest in that.
Yeah, and I will just say, I think it's important that it's not just from the golf clubs either.
No, we need to have some outside, yeah, we need to have some outside.
I think that Conservation Commission, you know, some of the things that Denise had mentioned to the Charter Revision Commission about, you know, someone for parking wreck, maybe, so that you have kind of different interests involved in, in that commission, so it's not just lopsided or whatnot.
We have lots of entries already, already. We already have, I think Sheila has either 10 or 12 applications already.
Good, okay, that's great.
Eleven, or to 11.
One thing I think you need to be aware of is according to your charter, you have to do it by minority representation. So you have to still be continent on that. All right, just as a reminder.
Do we, does it look that way on the 11, yeah?
I didn't really pay any attention to what was going to happen next week.
That's all right. So maybe as, maybe.
Sorry.
Maybe as we go, before we get to the next meeting, we.
Yep.
We can look at the candidates and see if we, you know, they're not, if they don't meet, yeah, if they don't meet the right mix, we can maybe get back.
Yes, I can do that even tomorrow.
I appreciate that, thanks. That's great. Okay. Motion, I don't think we did a motion, right?
I didn't give a motion for that?
Uh, no, I don't think we.
Okay.
Right, no. Did you? Do we get the motion?
Yes.
Okay, we're in discussion, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Some move. Thank you.
And the last item is the amendment to the peddlers and solicitors ordinance. Various things, we, we started looking, we had some issues with the peddlers and solicitors, and so based on some input from the police department, we thought that was important to modify the peddlers and solicitors ordinance to address the need for revocation, suspension of licenses. And so therefore, I went before the ordinance committee, and it was modified for the, the ordinance that you received on the package.
Okay. Great. Motion on this?
Move to authorize the interim town manager to schedule and advertise setting a public hearing for Tuesday, September 19th, 2017 at 7:00 PM on an ordinance amending Article 3, Peddlers and Solicitors Ordinance, adding Section 5-37, Revocation or Suspension Notice and Hearing Appeals. The town council may consider and act upon this amendment following the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Any none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move. Thank you. Okay. Wow, 23. Kate, we tried, we moved.
You're doing great, I appreciate it.
Fairly, fairly quickly. Now we have a couple of appointments, and these, I guess are reappointments, right?
Yes, both in Matabasco.
Okay, all right, so the Matabasco appointments, we take a first nomination.
For Matabasco District, number eight on our list here, appoint John Dunham.
Okay, nominate John Dunham. Any other nominations? Any none, we'll close the nominations, and all is in favor, John Dunham?
Aye.
Opposed? Some move? And another nomination?
And the second one, number nine here in the Matabasco District, I'll nominate James Fallon.
Okay, thank you. We have a nomination, James Fallon. Any other nominations? Any none?
Awesome.
We'll close the nominations, and all is in favor, James Fallon?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Some move.
That's almost as good as the probate judge down in Norwich, Chuck Norris.
We aim to please here. Okay, so we're done with that. We got our town manager report.
You've had a lot of stuff tonight, so I only have one quick thing I would like to discuss with you. I just wanted to make you aware that there is a discussion at the Connecticut, Central Connecticut Health District about possible consolidation. You may have been aware of this before. I wasn't totally aware of it until there's recently some emails that went back and forth. So I met with Charles Brown today just so that I could be up to speed and make sure I understood what was, what they're looking at doing, because it impacts the town. The consolidation, if it was to be, to go the way that they're looking at it right now, the town would no longer have its sanitary, residing in the town of Berlin's town offices. They would consolidate to an office somewhere within the district. They've been looking at this for a while, according to Charles, and looking at for cost effectiveness, staff cross-training, oversight of the staff. The one thing I wanted to make sure is, you know, and there was a couple of things I wanted to make sure that, you know, from the town's perspective, one, we had input into whatever they did do, number one. Number two is that I wanted to make sure that it didn't have a negative financial impact on the town. Right now, we provide them office space at a very reasonable cost, and so, you know, I said, you know, we're getting that space, and there's no intention at this point to increase the fees, but I wanted to make sure we didn't see an increase in fees. And he said that one of the stipulations in this, in this, in this consolidation would be, that it'd be revenue neutral to the towns, and I want to make sure that, that maintains. There has been conversation within the state of consolidating all health districts to Hartford, and that was not revenue neutral at all. So I want to make sure that we were revenue neutral if they do consolidation. And then third, and I don't know if it's third, but maybe the most important at all, that we don't see a declination in services to the town. You know, right now, we have, I believe we have very good service from, from the, to the Health District. Jeff is always available to us, I mean, he's almost perceived, he's part of the staff, and we have meetings between the planning and zoning and engineering departments. We draw him in, and we're able to review things very, very quickly. He's there, available to residents to come in and talk to, and that was one of my concerns. I want to make sure that we, that we have, and are continuing to provide that service to our residents, so. We'll keep the, we'll keep the lines of communication open. Ray Jarama does sit on the board, and along with Carolyn Weissaki, I'm not sure the third person, but we have people on that who do represent us, and they are looking out for our interest.
If I remember right, Jack, that was, if they were going to move it to Hartford, it was going to be 1.5% of our budget, or something ridiculous like that?
Oh, yeah, I know one town, I was talking to the first segment of one town, he told me that their bill was going to go up from $15,000 a year to $150,000 a year, you know, and you can't, you can't do that to towns, so. You're right, Brendan, it was going to be a tremendous increase.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, Jack? Is it? Highlights?
That was another, I think.
I think there were a lot, I forget it. Special, special committee reports, we talked about the ordinance committee, we had those two public hearings coming up, that's really what we had discussed, yes?
While you're on the committees, did we resolve the ordinance about the handicap parking? What did we do with that?
What did we do with the handicap parking?
No, we tabled that till the next meeting.
Okay.
We were looking at, what we're looking at doing is just rewording it, so that our, our ordinance is consistent with the state ordinance. It's a minor modification. Jeff has already provided us with the wording on that, so I think at our next meeting, our next ordinance meeting, we would, we would adopt that.
Okay, so that was, any other, I don't think there were any committee meetings other than I know of, so. On to councilor's comments.
I just want to say something. I see Lenny out there, and before our next meeting, we're going to have the Berlin Fair moved into September, and I'm hoping and praying we have good weather for you.
Talk to Irma.
Yeah. Lenny, can we move it back to October 3rd, right?
We know it's going to be sunny.
Of course. We assure that weekend in October is going to be a beautiful weekend.
That wasn't the only reason we changed.
No, I know.
We started losing so many vendors, because of our track record of all the rain, they kept moving, and after the Urban Fair, all the vendors were starting to head south.
Oh, okay.
So, if you noticed at the last few fairs?
I did.
We had less and less and less vendor space. This year, we're up, I think, about 30% over last year, so.
Wow, great.
At least that part of it was all right.
Yeah, that's, that's great, yeah. Okay, yeah, you know what? Just noted, the last couple of years, you've had a lot of open spots.
And that's where we're working, and we're trying to bring that back.
Okay. Yeah, good, that's good. Looks like it's working.